All right, we will go to the reading and approval of the minutes from August 21st, 2020-23, 2023. Motion to approve suspend reading. Got a motion?
Second.
Second by Stone. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Thank you. And then we've got the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
All right, we've got a motion by half. Second by Weider. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. We've got an agenda. Okay, 5A is the engineers' report. We do not have representation from more this evening, but we do have a report that they presented to us.
No action items on their report. It did update this morning that tank construction intends to be back the end of this week or first part of next week to remove the erosion controls, mow the existing growth, and do the reseeding of the barrier areas for the water tank project.
Seeing up on the board, are there any questions on the board? All right, hearing none, we'll move on then to 6A, and that is our pilot group. So who is going to represent that group tonight? Is that you, Michael?
Uh, yeah, I think Jordan sent an email as well.
Yep, yep, we got a reference, a recommendation, that would be the board appointment, which would be B. I didn't know if there was anything that you wanted to add to.
Um, I guess if you wanted to go ahead with the email, I can, uh, do that again.
Okay, you want me to read the email for purposes of the audience here? Basically, what it comes down to is there's an opening for the airport board. Maybe a number of citizens aren't aware that we do have a board for our airport out there. But there is, there's a group of folks out there, and there was a vacancy. And we received then from a small committee a recommendation for a, an individual, Mr. Stroming, to be a representative. And there was a brief discussion in this letter about the necessity of that individual and the position being a resident of the city proper. And I believe the bylaws and the requirements do not stipulate that they have to be a city resident. And seeing as how in the discussion of the letter here, there's certainly recommendations as well as Mr. Stroming being an active pilot and well-respected in the community. So that's kind of the meat and potatoes of the 5A portion there and the representation from the committee here. Are there anything, anything that you guys would like to add to that?
Yeah, I'll add to that. Yeah, just, uh, I'm the airport support network volunteer for the AOPA, and I support the nomination of Sean Stroming. Um, he's not only a resident of the county, but also a pilot due to his experience as a pilot. I feel he will better represent the other Mercer County pilots and users of the airport. Uh, Sean has been very active within the pilots' club as well as our community, aligned with growing, expanding the Mercer County Airport, which is the goal of my position as airport support network volunteer.
All right, thank you, Michael. So, Monty, is it, is it the board's direction then to make a motion and approve the actual appointment, or just to be notified of it from the board itself?
No, you would make the appointment because the appointment is for the, to represent the city of Hazen on the airport board.
Very well. All right, I would be looking then for a motion on what the board wishes with this nomination.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Sean Stroming.
Okay, motion from PAC? Second, second from Weider. Any discussion?
So then on this board, then, so there's just going, supposed to be one? One then, I guess, from the city, except the way that's.
Correct.
And then all the other spots are supposed to come?
There are.
Something like other towns?
Other cities, and the county also has representatives on the board, yes.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the nomination? Say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Congratulations. All right. Moving on then to 6C, we have a request for free and reduced hall rent by St. Paul Lutheran. On the board, you can see the content of that request. Pancake sausage breakfast. Wish this to the board. So moved. All right, motion by Casey. Second, second by Weider. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Okay, motion carries.
If I can't, excuse me, regarding the other appointment that we had advertised for, for the Housing Authority Board, I did get a response from Christie Fleefer Keller that she will not be seeking another term on that board.
Okay.
I will make some contacts and see if there's any interest. I haven't pre-seeded any as yet.
Okay. All right. I guess if anybody on the board is aware of anybody that might be a good candidate to give that information to Monty. Okay, we'll move on now to section eight. We have a couple of requests for, or applications for Renaissance Zone. So we'll begin then with the Albrecht application, 8A. So as I, I think everybody is aware, recently we just approved the addition of certain areas of town to the Renaissance Zone. That's all been approved, and Buster may want to speak to this a little bit more.
Yeah, basically, uh, so a week ago Monday, my Renaissance Board met and reviewed both of the applications that are in front of you tonight. And, uh, these applications are going into the new blocks that were added, uh, as part of the overall extension of the plan that we had had previously. And so, uh, what we have recommended, my board, and just a, just a reminder, that previously, the, uh, there were, you could do a five-year abatement on property tax under the old guidelines, okay? Under the new guidelines, which were just recently passed and legislation wanted to affect August 1st, the new regulations are that you could go up to eight years, okay? So we did go back and look in our records to see what we had done, what the city had done previously on new builds, okay? This is strictly new, new builds, okay? Uh, and what they had done on residential, okay? Uh, and previously what happened is that the city had issued abatements for, uh, the five year. Is that my thing singing, or? Should, yeah, I have it on silent, but anyway. Anyway, so, sorry for that. Previously, for all new, uh, proposals, we, the commission have, uh, my board had recommended a five-year abatement on property tax. And so we felt that moving forward, we shouldn't do anything less than that, uh, because we had already established a precedent. But here's what we had done. We recommend that we, the city would abate five years, and then what we would do is we would go on a reduced basis, year six, seven, and eight, okay? So year seven then would come in at 75% abatement, 50, and 25. And so then now would get us to the eight year, and then after eight years, then basically it's done and over. Now, that would be the only piece that would have, uh, any bearing on city taxes. There's another piece to that, and that is also then, what typically happens, is the participants then could get also the same type of abatement on income tax. And of course, realizing, that's state income tax. Realize, of course, we don't know anything about where some of that is going to fall, and that would be something they have to take care of on their own when they typically file their state income tax. So, so my board's recommendation is that you approve the applications, uh, as I had indicated, as I stated. So basically, again, it would be five-year, 100% abatement on property. Year seven would be, excuse me, year six would be 75%, year seven would be 50, year eight would be 25%. So, questions?
When, when it was a five-year program, did you do full abatement for the, for the entire five year?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So there was no tiered down at that time?
Not on new structures.
And residential.
And residential.
Right.
Yeah. And the other part is, is if you recall, as part of the application process, we needed to make certain that we included both residential and commercial properties in our application.
So are these, I guess, these, I guess, like new ones, right?
Right.
Where at? Are they up in the?
Well, these two happen to be up in that area, that expedition states, yep. But realize, of course, we've added more, there's only, we only added two, two blocks, I believe, three blocks up in that area. And we added seven other blocks going in different directions, so, so they would fall into the same kind of category, yep, residential, city builds.
Okay, wish this to the board? Will we tackle both of these together, or do you want to do them separately? Monty, keep them together.
Both, both of the applications are mutually identical to one another in terms of what's the recommendation by Buster's board, yes.
We have a motion to approve both Renaissance Zone applications. Okay, motion to approve both by Weider. Second, second by half. Discussion.
So I know I've said this before, is that, you know, you know, I guess, I don't think that this, this, I guess, program is for, I guess, for then, I guess, there's some brand-new, I guess, brand-new homes, but, you know, the way that I view it, you know, you know, if you buy a old home and stuff, want to tear it down, you know? Then that's fine, but.
I know in, in some discussions with Buster, um, with regard to Renaissance Zone, as it relates to new construction, there's, there's not a lot in some rural communities out here that differentiate or, or offer up opportunity and incentive for, for folks to come build new homes. And I know in this situation here, we've got two residents that are rebuilding, but at the end of that window of time then, presumably based upon the value of those homes, it'd be good income for the city. Any other comments or questions? Roll call. Weider.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern. No. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of both A and B there. The next item we have is 8C for a building slash moving permit for a shed.
Mr. and Mrs. Hegemeister are intending to bring in a 10 by 16 as a northland shed like we've approved in the past. They're locked up in expedition estates. They have purchased, my line isn't quite half, but they have purchased half of this other lot, and that's in approximately location where that shed will be, there are no barriers required. Similar to the ones in the past.
Assuming it's going to be same color as your house, or?
I guess I would defer to them.
Oh!
Yes.
And it is in compliance with the covenants that are at expedition estates, since there are covenants out there.
Wish this to the board? Motion to approve. Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Weider. Second, second by half. Any further discussion? Roll call. Weider.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll move into the report section, water sewer and garbage. I had some discussions earlier this week, uh, with our water team, and we know that we are at end of life, and we talked about that briefly with the water meters that we have currently in place, not with the meters themselves, but with the communications and everything associated with it. And, uh, what we, what we are doing is we are going to entertain another company, an alternative company, that is making a presence in western North Dakota. And so we thought we would entertain Dog and Pony Show, for lack of better terms, and see what they have to offer, and then we can take a look at, conceivably going out for competitive bid if we're impressed with what we see. So we're looking at early piggybacking this presentation with one of our commission meetings coming up. We were looking at the 18th of October, is that right?
September.
September, 18th of September, so that'll be coming up quickly here. So we'll, we'll get information out for the board to be present if you would like to be for that. Uh, the second thing that we had discussion on is there's some concern with one of our lagoons, the, the boundaries of that lagoon with regard to the height of the material around that in the springtime, when we are melting from the winter and whatnot. Uh, we're finding that we have to transfer from pond to pond probably a little sooner than we would choose to normally. So I will be reaching out to, as will Jared, reaching out to more engineering, so that we can take a look at what would be necessary from a design standpoint, and then we can pursue then, uh, getting a bid out on the streets for, for doing that. So that'll be coming down the line here. We'll, we'll have to take a look at what those costs are as to whether or not we would try to do it sooner than later.
So then Dan, I guess, is that then, I guess, like cleaning?
Well, it's not so, not so much cleaning, we, we've just found that, uh, that over time, that, that it's, I don't know if it, if it builds higher than normally, or if it's just worn down a little bit.
It's settling under any erosion.
Okay. So, so this here is around the rim, and it, and it requires a clay-type material along with some coverage over that, so it's a, a little bit specialized work that would require likely design from more engineering. Okay, is that just due to runoff then? What's that, is that just due to runoff then? Probably, you know, you got rain and everything associated with the rain coming down and wind erosion and, and things of that nature. And over time, you get some settlement and stuff like that that's just going to naturally occur. So it's not untypical, I think we've had this work done in, in the past, quite a number of years ago already, but.
See, it's probably been several years ago.
Yep. Yeah, Monty was going to look back and, and look at his history to see if there was any record there, but.
Right.
That's all I have for tonight. So media, street cemetery.
All right, a couple of things, Dave just informed me, and he can elaborate on it. So we've been talking, addressing our plows, possibly getting another snow gate for winter plows on our haylooms. Free has got us on the list, we just have not yet got a price yet. Hopefully we can get free going, and I'd like to see something.
Oh, dang, next to the P-share.
I'd like to see something in the next meeting or two so we can get that rolling, because we're not getting on the great white weather.
So we're gonna, we're gonna try to get all that accomplished then before we get into the, the next season here?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, secondly, of course, we all know about our John Deere mower, and Dave called me at a week and a half for so gold, and we asked for different quotes, and I've got three different ones here in front of me, but we've got an option too. Um, he's talked to a guy down in Hanover that races this same motor in the, in the monobores, and he said, I don't think it's $19,000. I'm going to call it damage. So I asked Dave to get these quotes, um, so we had two different options. And looking at these, I'll hand them around, we got a Kubota, excuse me, Toro out of Minnesota somewhere.
Brooklyn Center.
Brooklyn Center, and then John Deere, we just got hot off the press. Um, what, what the intent is, is to, I'd like to pursue the fix of the motor with the other gentleman in Hanover, um, and come next meeting or potentially the meeting after, because this quote for John Deere is our cheapest and expiration begins on the 5th. So we've got two meetings to, to deal with. But my proposal would be to trade in the 2010 mower, which Dave will get a trading value from Dave out at RDO, and pursue this new mower with the trading value of the 2010 and keep the 16 and fix that motor for, I guess, a quarter of the amount of money that we were quoted.
So the individual from, from Hanover, is he a certified shopper, or is it?
He works out here at RDO, hold on, is on, but he has all the software and tools to work out, want to talk to him.
And, and what type of warranty would we get with that?
I guess.
Depending on what are the needs for repair, okay?
We haven't really, I told Dave, just hang tight, let's talk about this. I mean, it's evident that the John Deere is way cheaper of the, of the two, plus or minus a couple thousand, um, and then we could make that determination, which, I mean, I personally want to pursue that motor with our Hanover gentleman, but also in the next meeting or two, after Dave gets a trading value on the 2010 mower, pursue the, the purchase of the new, so we've got a seven, 16 and a 20, 20, would it be a 24?
Would it be a 24?
24.
Question. Which one of the two has air conditioning? The 16, non-16?
No.
One of the mowers are on the 10, correct?
Correct, yep. This one be air conditioning?
Or no air conditioning? No, this would be air conditioning, the John Deere.
Yeah.
My train of thought too is worst-case scenario, if that motor, when he checks it out, if the motor is shot, then maybe a guy would take it back to RDO, have that new motor put in at the 17,000, you're gaining two years warranty. So if you trade off the 10 on, on a 24, put a motor in it, if that's worst-case scenario, you'd actually be running two mowers with, with warranty. Then in a year's time, if I could probably trade that 16 off, run it has warranty on maybe a 25 or a 26, get rid of it before the warranty's completely out, will give you your best reset route out there. By then it would be actually at that age to be replaced, moving across that bridge after, you know, another diagnosis or whatever.
So has the individual from Hanover offered, he's, he's got a bid to explore it?
He's got about $300 to $400 to explore.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I can cap with it that, we might try to give a few more pieces off.
So we want to be able to tell how.
No, no.
If he determines the same thing that we got as an initial.
Then I would check to see if he could put a motor in it, if it would have the same warranty, or if I have to go to RDO or whatever, I, I assume he'd like to rate it probably less than, than RDO's, maybe as an individual shop.
Okay. Do you have any action?
So I just got a question about, about these other brands and stuff, you know, it's got then, I mean, I mean a blower on there, you know, that's something like 8,000 bucks, you know, a snow plow, you know, is that what, like 2,000 bucks, and then a broom and stuff? I'm just curious, we already have that stuff.
But if we go with a different brand, then the stuff we got isn't interchangeable.
Yeah.
So on the 24, John Deere, the stuff we have, the snow blower, really will fit.
Yeah, because we got a blower, sweeper, and the deck.
And the deck, yes.
So really, if you probably want to stay with him, the John Deere, I think.
Yeah. And I don't know if you noticed that, that is a side discharge deck versus the rear, which I asked Dave before, we, my first thought was, you blow the rear discharge and it sucks up into the motor during the summer? I mean, I, I like the idea of going back to that side discharge.
The reason we went with that rear discharge, that we had double incidents where we threw some baseballs or softballs and we actually hit a couple vehicles, so we thought, well, rear discharge is going to be the answer, but it blows everything right into the radiator and stuff.
Yeah.
It's a good idea, but it doesn't work.
So my actual D is to table that John Deere quote for potentially our next meeting or the meeting after. I want Dave to get a trade-in value of our 2010 with Dave out at RDO, and then pursue our option with the motor replacement on the 16 with a gentleman in Hanover.
Tonight is just a heads-up action later.
Yeah, I'd like to, I don't know if we need, do we need a motion for a motor action? So just a heads-up action, I guess.
Anything else? All right, finance, busing, and library.
So Dave, I got this time.
Thank you. And Mr. Weider, please fire forestry.
I think we reported about a last meeting. All right, so we've got runs for the fire department from half of July and half of August. We had a motor vehicle accident on Highway 200 and County Route 13. Uh, we also had another motor vehicle accident on Zap County Route 15. A Baylor fire, uh, or multi-dwelling unit, uh, structure fire. Don't remember that one. Uh, and a lipocyst at 16th Street Southwest, another Baylor fire on County 20. We had the Buella Bay and Hazen Bay storms, we both went out surveying, looking to ensure everybody was okay. Another motor vehicle accident on 49, model number 100, and a motor vehicle accident on Highway 1806. This fairly busy month for us there. We've got some calls to service for July and August. August, we had 193 total calls to service for the police department. Chief Wolf having 62 of them, Officer Samantha Melburg having 53 of them, Officer Anthony Melburg having 30 of them, and Officer Byers having 24. For August, we had 168 calls to service. Chief Wolf having 68 of them, Officer Samantha Melburg having 41 of them, Officer Anthony Melburg having 26 of them, and Officer Byers having 18 of them. It looks like it dropped quite a bit from month to month there. Um, we have nothing from forestry.
All right.
I got a question about that. Does that give times of calls to service? I'm assuming it's busier in one time than at the other, I didn't notice that.
Breakdown, breakdown of times, and these are the ones, which ones are the busiest in the country?
So the question in your mind is? So the question in your mind is why the differences among...
Well, I'm just curious, I didn't look through all this, I just, where the peaks are at, I guess.
Sure.
And if I would have looked through all of it, I would have answered my own question, so...
Well, I mean, it does make sense that Chief Wolf has the most, because he only works day shift.
Right.
And there's going to be most calls to service day shift. Why the other three are always in the same realm, I'm not sure. You know, I always have the same person at the bottom of the barrel, and the other, you know, the other two are kind of floating in between the top and the bottom all the time. Why that is, I couldn't tell you. Any questions at all?
From forestry, the state forestry was up. Mike Lemire and I, we spent probably half a day with the forestry. We went out and looked at a few trees. It's ended up in the season now, it's more impossible to diagnose such illness or whatever. You know, we have a couple of trees that will probably try to get done this fall or this winter, depending on how rough the weather is, then we'll start the diagnosis process come spring leaf out or whatever.
You used them also to determine what the mystery tree was that we had conversation on the other morning?
Yeah, we looked at those tattoos.
Okay.
No, it was pretty informative, those three of them are from forestry out of this morning, so we had a meeting, spent a good half day with them.
Excellent. All right, Buster, you got anything for us for HC?
Well, one of the things, when you were talking about the water meters, I was at a workshop last week for developers, and listened to a panel, and might be worth our effort to look into the possibility of maybe some infrastructure grant money might be available for the water meters. I was going to talk to Monty about that when I got back, and I kind of forgot about it, but now that you mentioned it, you know, I'm sure that if that's available, Jared is probably familiar with it, I'm not sure.
Okay.
You know, but I think it would be, because I believe that the water meter stuff, there's definitely some grant money available for infrastructure for water stuff that I know, okay? Even though I know you, you know, you've done the big water power project and all that, but this is some good balance, I think.
And I know if we continue with the same manufacturer, then the plan is primarily just changing off the reader heads and not the meters themselves. And we're getting to a point where we're probably going to be doing some systematic changes of meters periodically due to failures, whereas if we change manufacturers, then it's a new meter and a new head on it, stuff like that, and so we'll just kind of see how it all pans out.
And possibly too, you know, based on the discussion about the lagoon, maybe that's something that possibly could fall into that as well.
Yeah, we're running both of those programs and more.
All right. The only other thing that I would report on is we had a MEC meeting last Thursday, not real good attendance, talked about some of the things that Basin Transload Station, which is the station out in the Zap area, clearly probably has that lease on that, we have a lease with MEC, and now it's due to expire, so we're going to renew that lease, and Global, it was called Basin Transload at one time, it's called Global, Transload now, the new name, they also lease some of that, so it's kind of a three-way street. We're working at trying to renew the lease and possibly eventually with the lease to buy, purchase that sometime down the road, that piece of property in Mercer County, so... But we'll see how that materializes. There is, there's been some discussion then also with some other potential companies about coming to Mercer County in addition to, everybody's aware of the Talon thing, Talon Metals, they just haven't been able to make an announcement as of yet, but in addition to that, there's a couple of other companies that are possibly very interested in coming to Mercer County as well, which sounds very, very promising in terms of where things are at. The problem with all that stuff, of course, is it just takes so long, you know? And we're still waiting for DOT, Department of Energy, or DOT, Department of Energy, DOE, to make an announcement on the Talon set, because basically we're, you know, we've got a gag order on us, we can't say anything until they give us the green light to announce that. Questions?
Okay, thank you, Buster. No president's reports tonight with Jerry not being here. So we will run down to the old business. We talked already about the mower repair and replacements. Are there any other comments on that before we move on to the next? So under the new business, 12A, one of our officers has made a recommendation to the board based upon his experience out there in the field, feeling that there is a need for either a stop sign or a yield sign at the intersection of Fifth Street and Third Avenue in northeast. Apparently in that particular location, our officer has experienced or witnessed some near miss situations. It's another uncontrolled intersection, which we have many of in our hometown. His concern was with the school traffic coming through there, and without any control devices, it's kind of hard to enforce anything other than the speed limit. He's thinking maybe a stop sign on, on which direction did he say? He just wanted you to consider a stop sign or a yield sign. Basically on that stretch, the stops, the stop and yields are on the avenues going north and south, so the east and west would be through traffic. I don't know that there's ever been a control device on that intersection. When I had asked Jim about it earlier today, he's handled one accident in his time with the city of that, and that was a two-vehicle accident, and I guess one of them didn't yield for the other one, and they both came from each other.
There's two intersections on that stretch too, if I remember, or are you, Monty?
Yeah, the biggest one was this one over here, coming straight down the north from Moses Park, past Moses Park, going south. And with no sidewalks on the west side of the street, or east side for that matter. A lot of times even today when I was taking inspectors, there were school children walking down in the middle of the street. Unfortunately, it's another area where there really aren't sidewalks on either side over here on Fifth Street, and that's so narrow. So the near misses with vehicle pedestrian or... Vehicle pedestrian. Vehicle pedestrian is what he said. And I don't know if he wanted to write something up for you, or Jim's or me personally, if he's requesting that, I would like to see him come to the meeting and request it. Or at least get with Chief Wolf and have Chief Wolf come. Maybe mock up, mock up one of these drawings to where, where they would be making the recommendation for the actual signage to be in. You know, it's, it's hard looking at it right now to understand, it looks on that corner there, it's had the update to the curb and gutter there, and so would it be something that we'd be saw cutting into the concrete and putting it in or concreting in?
On the left, you would, yes. Well, if you were going to put yield or stop signs in, it would go in the house with the green, and over the other, the active grass areas.
Okay.
Stop the north-south traffic.
Yeah, you'd be able to get in the grass. That would be there and then over, over here, at this house and right beside this round. And so if and when we get to the point where we approve that, then it would be, David, it would be you and your staff that would do the...
Yeah, we'd be calling for a location, so we could push the sign forward.
Okay. I'm in agreement with Dustin that it'd be nice to have some representation here and some discussion. You know, it, it sounds like we're hearing a little bit different feedback with the chief having only experienced one situation there, so it'd be nice to understand the history a little bit more. But certainly it's going to be our officers that are going to be experiencing some of this stuff. I can get back to them. All right, we've come to the portion of the meeting then for public comments. Is there anybody in the audience wanting to state anything else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the bills. We received some additional paperwork from Monty this evening. Well, the approved bill was presented. All in favor, say aye. All saying aye? Hold on, you have to do a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, so roll call, roll call, roll call. Aye. Stern. Aye. Hatt. Aye. Hiller. Aye. Motion carries. All right, meeting adjourned.